Good evening and welcome to the regular city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 20th, 2023, and is 6:01. Regular meetings are generally held on the first and third Tuesday of each month in the council chambers here at City Hall. City Clerk Assistant, please call roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Genoah?
Here.
Councilmember Johns?
Here.
Councilmember Winstead?
Present.
Mayor Protem Otto?
Here.
Mayor Jennings?
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have two closed session items. We will now take public comments on the closed session items. City Clerk Assistant, do we have any request to speak forms?
No, Mayor.
Great, we will now close public comments. City Clerk Smith, sorry, City Attorney Smith, will you please read us into closed session?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor and Council. There are two items tonight. The first is a closed session with legal counsel to talk about anticipated litigation. That was a written threat, so it was attached to the agenda that was published tonight. The second one is about anticipated litigation, but about the possibility of initiating litigation. The Brown Act requires no disclosure except that under the circumstances of this matter.
Thank you very much. We will now recess into closed session. Good evening. I would like to call the meeting back to order at seven o'clock. City, sorry, City Attorney Smith, are there any reportable action from the closed session?
Thanks, Mayor and Council. There was no reportable action taken, thank you.
Thank you. I would now like to invite Pastor Jim Seisler of the Laguna Niguel Presbyterian Church to provide this evening's invocation, followed by Boy Scout PAC 705 to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for the beauty of this day, for the grace of our community, and for the men and women that you have called to leadership here in Laguna Niguel. Lord, this is a difficult time to be in the role of stewards of a community, so I ask that you would bless our city council and all of the city leadership gathered here with wisdom and discernment. For citizens gathered to observe and perhaps comment, I ask that you would give them ears to listen and understand, as well as civility, as they bring their positions and concerns forward. May this meeting be a wonderful example of leadership and citizens working together for the common good. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. Cub Scout PAC 705, Cutter Guard Advance. Please place your hand over your heart. Those in uniform and veteran salute. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with thirteenth and justus for all. Two. Audience, you may be seated.
Thank you so much. Let's give him a hand and we will come down and you can introduce yourself. Excellent job, gentlemen. That was fantastic. And if you don't mind, would you mind introducing yourself? Tell us what grade you are going into and what you're looking forward to most about summer.
Hi, my name is Nicholas. I'm going to fifth grade and I want to enjoy La Bija summer.
Hi, my name is Cody. I'm going to third grade. I'm going to La Bija summer.
My name is Nolan. I'm going to third grade and I'm looking forward to playing with my friends this summer.
Hi, my name is Dallas and I'm going into third grade and I'm just looking forward to, I'm going to Michigan.
Hi, my name is Jackson. I'm going into third grade and I am looking forward to going to Michigan too.
Hi, my name is Johnny. I'm going into third grade. I'm really excited to go to the Grand Canyon this summer.
Great job, guys. Well, you did a wonderful job with the Pledge of Allegiance and thank you so much. Who's going to dismiss us? Oh yeah, let's take a picture first. Forgot that step. All right, very good. Are you going to dismiss us?
Cutter Guard dismissed.
Okay, and then we'll go up. Excellent job, guys. Thank you so much. We will now move on to public comments. Any person wishing to address the council is respectfully asked to complete and present a gold color request to speak form. These forms are available on the counter that is located near the door of the council chambers. Please be aware that the time limit will be three minutes for each person to speak. This is a time for members of the public to share comments with the city council. The Brown Act does not allow city council to respond to speakers at the meeting. However, city staff will follow up and respond to questions or provide information needed. Speakers will be called in order from the request to speak forms. To allow equal time for speakers, minutes may not be given to another speaker. You may have another person read your written statement. City Clerk Assistant, are there any additional request to speak forms?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. We have one. Roberto Claudio? Come on up. Thank you.
For your time, what I wanted to talk about was improving bicycle infrastructure. I rode my bike here, three miles, wasn't that bad. It was really pleasant right by the regional park. I think it's important that we try to promote cycling because it helps reduce traffic, it helps improve health, less noise pollution, because I know that's a really big problem. I get woken up by night because someone's racing down Moulton Parkway. I'm sure I'm not the only one. It helps promote local businesses. There's been multiple studies across the country where bike lanes installed down a busy corridor and it helps retail and specifically food. Food-related businesses, restaurants, they see a really big uptick in customers. I also think that we should just, in general, improve our streets. There's been, what, three accidents that I can recall down Moulton Parkway a couple of weeks back, all within a mile of each other, and they're really not pretty. So I think protected bike lanes, protected intersections, like extended curbs, so people are exposed less when they're crossing the street. I know there's things we could do to traffic calming, less wider lanes. Wider lanes promote speeding, which I know is also a problem here. So I don't want to get hit by a car. I'm sure nobody else here wants to get hit by a car. So yeah, I guess that's everything I have to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your insight. Thank you. We will now close public comments. We will now move on to our city council presentations. Our first item is a formal administration oath of office to our new city council member, Foster Jean Johns. I would like to invite newly appointed Councilmember Johns, who will also be joined by his wife, Michelle. Please approach the wall. City Clerk Assistant will presenting the oath of office to Councilmember Johns this evening. City Clerk Assistant, will you please join Councilmember Johns for the oath of office?
I, Jean Johns. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully. Discharge the duties. Upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Assistant, and welcome officially, Councilmember Johns. Congratulations. This concludes the presentation of administration of oath of office. Councilmember Johns will join us on the dais and we will move on to comments by our newly appointed council member. Councilmember Johns, you have the floor.
Thank you. It is an honor and a privilege to have been sworn in tonight. I am truly humbled. My senior year of high school, I was the honorary city attorney for a day. Never did I dream back then that one day I would be sworn in as a city council member in this beautiful city. I want to thank the mayor, the city council, for your trust in me. Like teams I used to coach, we will make a strong team. The city is blessed to have had 20 remarkable applicants apply for this seat. All truly deeply care about this city, as do I. I want to thank my family and my friends, many who are here tonight, for their encouragement and support. I want to thank my wife, Michelle, who was by my side through this whole process. And every single day, she reminded me she married a cop, not a politician. I am honored to represent the residents of Laguna Niguel for the next 17 months. I am confident that through my actions and my votes, the residents will agree that I have only their best interests at heart. And in closing, again, I just simply want to thank you all for this tremendous opportunity. Thank you.
Well, thank you and congratulations. We look forward to serving with you. That concludes our city council presentation. We will now move on to the consent calendar. Are there any items to be pulled for the consent calendar for questions or discussion by the council?
I'd like to pull item eight.
May I get a motion to remove the remaining items of the agenda?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any?
Oh.
Sorry, I have to abstain.
From?
The minute?
Yes, from item three.
Item three, yes, thank you.
Okay. Motion, oh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and one abstention on item three. Councilmember? Councilmember Winstead, item eight?
Yeah, so council, I'm sorry. Item eight is the Orange County Transportation Authority, OC GO, Measure M eligibility package submittal. It was actually very interesting for me to read. I really enjoyed it. I thought that it was very well-prepared. I love that we've got a seven-year capital improvement program that includes Crown Valley Parkway road widening, remediating the earth movement under La Paz. Also, in response to our public speaker, there's going to be a bicycle green zone pilot project around the Chet Holyfield Building, so that should be really exciting to see that come online. It's a pilot project. And also, I really like that there's also going to be catch basins or catch nets for our stormwater runoff so that we don't have pollution going into the ocean. So, and also, in the spirit of fiscal responsibility, a large portion of all of these projects are funded by state and federal funds, including SB1 gas tax and Measure M. So I wanted to bring that to people's attention and with that, I'd like to move the item.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you so much. Thank you. We'll now move on to public hearing item. Our public hearing item this evening is adoption of fiscal year 2023-2024 operating and capital budget, and approval of updates to the fee schedule for community development services, and amending the fee for usage of credit and debit cards. City Manager Letourneau and Finance Director Agrilius, will you please provide a staff report on this item?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. It's a pleasure to present the fiscal year 2023-2024 operating and capital improvement budget to you this evening. This year's budget motto is strength through purpose, is reflective of the city's longstanding and intentional commitment to excellence in service. A key strength that is attained through purposeful budgeting, planning, engagement, development, and preservation. Laguna Niguel's conservative fiscal practices continue to result in a strong financial position. It is truly this position that allows for the city's purpose to be carried out year after year. Fiscal year 2023-2024 operating and capital improvement budget is balanced at $60.8 million without utilizing any reserves. Further, the budget includes an allocation of $500,000 to the city's infrastructure reserves for future capital projects. This budget was built on our foundation, which is our mission, vision, and values. Specifically, it is our strategic plan that sets the goals, objectives, and strategies that guides our decision-making and our work plan. The fiscal year 2023-2024 budget does several things. It carries out the goals and objectives that we identified in the strategic plan. It provides the highest quality of services and programs to the community. It maintains and upgrades the city's existing infrastructure, and it plans for the future through the continuation of the city's general plan update. This evening, we'll hear details regarding our projected revenues and expenditures and reserve levels from Finance Director Agrilius and Public Works Director Scott will share the city's capital improvement projects that we have planned for next year. So now I'll turn over this presentation to Finance Director Agrilius.
Thank you, City Manager Letourneau. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Welcome, Councilmember Johns. I'm excited to present the budget overview for the preliminary fiscal year 2023-2024 operating capital improvement budget for the city of Laguna Niguel. The preliminary general fund budget is balanced with general fund revenues coming in at $52.6 million compared to general fund expenditures budgeted at $52.1 million. This results in a general fund budget surplus of $500,000 or half a million. Staff is recommending that the city council commit the half million dollar budget surplus to increasing the city's deferred maintenance, capital assets, and infrastructure reserves. The city's financial reserves policy states that sound financial management includes the practice and discipline of maintaining adequate reserve funds for known and unknown contingencies. Staff's recommendation is consistent with the city's financial reserves policy. As has been the case historically, property taxes and sales taxes account for approximately 80% of all general fund revenues. Property taxes are estimated to increase by 3.7% as compared to the fiscal year 2023 to 2023 budget and total $26.8 million for the upcoming year. Sales taxes are projected to be $15 million in fiscal year 2324, which represents an increase of 4.8% when compared to the fiscal year 2223 adopted budget. This slide provides a more detailed breakdown of the different revenue categories in the general fund. Total general fund revenues are increasing by $3.4 million, which is an increase of 6.9% when compared to last year, 2223 adopted budget. Interest income is projected to increase by approximately 250% in fiscal year 2324 due to an increase in interest rates and a concerted effort by city staff to actively take advantage of those higher rates. Community development revenue is projected to increase by 41% in the upcoming fiscal year, mostly due to a $1 million increase in building and safety fees. We did want to update city council on a few things related to the community development department. The community development department conducted a fee study in the current fiscal year to look at the planning-related fees. The last time these fees were adjusted was back in 2005. At that time, the fully burden rate was calculated $90 per hour, but the council opted to leave the fee at $79 per hour. I'm sorry, I think I said adjusted, but last time they reviewed was in 2005. The fee study conducted this year resulted in a recommended rate of $155 per hour to recover the city's costs of administering the planning functions. As part of the fee study, staff also compared the planning fee for other South Orange County cities and noted the average fee was $156 per hour. Staff is recommending that the hourly fee for planning functions be increased, but in a phased approach from $79 per hour currently to $116 per hour in the upcoming fiscal year 2324, and then to $155 per hour in fiscal year 2425. The community development department is also proposing to add a technology fee and a general plan maintenance fee, both of which will be assessed at 2% of building fees. These fees will provide necessary funding to maintain the software and other technology-based services, as well as future updates to the city's general plan. These are fees also charged by other cities and those fees do vary. However, our proposed fees for the technology and general plan maintenance fees are at or below average for the other cities in South Orange County. The city is also requesting that city council approve a revision to the convenience fee for card transactions for community development activities. Last year, the city council approved staff's recommendation to pass the fee for the convenience of using a credit card onto the customer. At that time, the council adopted the pass-through to be a specific fee amount. And the specific fee amount the city was being charged at that time. However, the current payment solution platform will no longer be supported and the city will be implementing and the city will be implementing a new solution in early 2024. Because the convenience fee is set by the payment solutions provider and is subject to change, staff is recommending that the City Council approve the convenience fee charge as a 100% pass-through rather than a specific percentage. It is also worth noting, however, that there will continue to be no additional fees for any payments received via check or cash. The preliminary fiscal year 2324 budget includes two requests for additional full-time positions, bringing the total full-time personnel to 66. The Community Development Department is requesting the addition of a planning manager, and the Administration Department is requesting the addition of a management analyst. Additionally, there are eight reclassifications included as part of this budget. These staffing changes are being requested to provide the appropriate allocation of resources to meet the goals and objectives set forth in the city's strategic plan. In total, general fund expenditures and transfers out decreased by $1.4 million as compared to the prior year budget. However, the fiscal year 2223 budget figure that you see in the table includes the $4.8 million allocation for what's called additional discretionary payments that was sent to CalPERS to reduce the city's unfunded pension liability. Those payments were approved by City Council in November 2022 and resulted in an increase to the fiscal year 2223 appropriations. If we were to exclude those payments, the general fund expenditures are actually increasing by approximately $3.4 million, or 6.5% over the prior year 2223 budget. That 6.5% increase is primarily driven by overall inflationary conditions and an increase to the city's street maintenance contract and a projected increase to the contract with Orange County Sheriff's Department for the city's police services. The fiscal year 2324 budget also includes a $200,000 allocation from the general fund to provide funding for the Sea Country Senior and Community Center Roof Replacement Project. This allocation can be seen in the table above under the "Transfers Out" line item. I would now like to discuss the projected general fund fund balance, which incorporates the projected results of the fiscal year 2324 budget. The budgeted year-end general fund balance at June 30, 2023 is $44.0 million. Based on the preliminary fiscal year 2324 revenues of $52.6 million and expenditures and transfers out of $52.1 million, the projected general fund fund balance at June 30, 2024 is $44.5 million. Additionally, City Council requested that the discussion to allocate the fiscal year 2122 year-end surplus of $2.1 million be discussed after the strategic planning session in March. Staff is recommending that City Council also commit the $2.1 million of fiscal year 2122 year-end surplus to the deferred maintenance, capital assets, and infrastructure reserves. In total, City Council is being asked to allocate $2.6 million to the deferred maintenance, capital assets, and infrastructure reserves. This chart provides the allocation of the projected $44.5 million general fund fund balance at June 30, 2024. This chart does assume that the half-million-dollar fiscal year 2324 budget surplus and the $2.1 million fiscal year end 2122 surplus are committed to the deferred maintenance, capital assets, and infrastructure reserves. And this chart provides some additional details on the different categories for the general fund fund balance, how the balance is allocated, and the projected balance at June 30, 2024. It's worth noting, the preliminary fiscal year 2324 budget book includes a summary of the general fund fund balance categories similar to this table, and that's on page eight. And this concludes my presentation on the budget overview, and I would like to turn the presentation over to our Public Works Director, Jackie Scott.
Thank you, Director Agrilius. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Next, I'm going to cover the capital improvement program, but first, I want to acknowledge some accomplishments from the current fiscal year, including the renovations at the City Council chambers, replacement of the synthetic turf at Chaperosa Park, completion of several elements within the park's modernization program, installation of vehicle detection improvements at key intersections, and repaving poor-conditioned streets as part of the residential overlay program. These accomplishments were only possible because of the incredible team within the Public Works Department and the partnerships we enjoy with other city departments. I am honored to work with such an incredible group of talented and dedicated employees. The proposed fiscal year 2324 capital improvement program has thirteen projects totaling just under $7 million in improvements across four categories. The list of projects includes one facility project, two park projects, nine street projects, and one transportation project totaling nearly $7 million. I do want to give an update on our pavement management program. A pavement management program assists policymakers in the development of roadway budgets and ensures compliance with OCTA requirements and Measure M2 eligibility. Some of the critical elements of the pavement management program include a complete pavement inventory and field assessment of roadway conditions, an inventory of pavement age and work history, and a projection of funding levels for future projects. PCI is a numerical rating of pavement condition based on the type and severity of distress observed on the pavement surface. PCI is between 0 and 100, with 100 considered a brand-new street, and 0 is considered a dirt road. Laguna Niguel's roadway network is currently rated an overall 78, with 80 established as the city's benchmark goal. Each year, the city invests in pavement improvement projects through the adoption of the CIP, and as long as the investment continues at the recommended funding level, the city will continue to improve pavement conditions across the city to reach a PCI of 80. Currently, 2/3 of the city's roadways are considered in the good or very good range, with approximately 1/3 that fall below the acceptable range and are considered fair, poor, or very poor condition. A successful pavement management program has both a preventative maintenance element to keep good streets in the good category, and a pavement rehabilitation program to treat streets that have fallen into the fair or poor categories. A critical component of the city's approved pavement management program is the residential resurfacing project, otherwise known as the Slurry Seal Program. This project is constructed biennially, every other summer to take advantage of the warm summer weather and to reduce conflicts with school traffic. Zones 3 and 4 are scheduled to begin construction this month, and Zones 5 and 6 will be scheduled for construction in June of 2025. The Slurry Seal Program is the most cost-effective way for the city to extend the life of residential streets and save money. In future years, several arterial roadways will require pavement rehabilitation. This is a removal of the top 1 to 2 inches of asphalt by a large grinding machine, followed by the addition of an overlay of new asphalt. This treatment is generally most appropriate for arterial roadways because of the heavy traffic loading experienced along these streets, including high volumes and high rates of chalk traffic. Alicia Parkway, Golden Lantern, Highlands, Paseo de Colinas, and Rancho Niguel Road all will require programming in a future-year CIP. Next is a list of projects in the CIP. The Sea Country Senior Community Center Roof Replacement Project will replace the roof system on the building that was originally installed over 30 years ago. The construction is anticipated to start in January 2024 and be completed in June 2024 pending winter weather conditions. The Marina Hills Park Improvements Project was designed in fiscal year 2223 and is expected to start the construction phase in December 2023. This project was created in response to the park's needs assessment completed in 2022, and will expand the existing half-basketball court to a full court, add sidewalk connectivity throughout the park, add wave-finding signage, and new shade and benches at the sports fields. The Crown Valley Park Wi-Fi project will install an outdoor Wi-Fi network to support the community's use of Crown Valley Park. Phase 1 of this project has already begun, which installs Wi-Fi at the amphitheater, and Phase 2 will continue the expansion of the Wi-Fi throughout the rest of Crown Valley Park starting this fall. The Accessible Pedestrian Signal Push-Button Project is an annual program funded through the city's CDBG allocation to upgrade the pedestrian activated phase of the traffic signal to meet current ADA standards, which includes an audible function for the hearing impaired. To date, the city has upgraded 48 intersections, and this year's allocation will upgrade an additional eight intersections. The Pacific Island Drive Drainage and Wall Improvement Project replaces a dilapidated temporary sandbag drainage structure with a permanent concrete drainage structure. Public Works has obtained an easement from the underlying property owner to access and maintain the improvements and routinely remove accumulated debris. The new permanent drainage system will create a direct connection into the storm drain, and runoff to Pacific Island Drive at this location will be eliminated. The project design is complete, the easement documents have been signed, and construction is anticipated to start in March 2024. The local roadway pavement rehabilitation project was created to address a number of arterials that were damaged through the winter storms and deteriorated substantially after the heavy rain events. The project will patch cracked seal and slurry sections of roadway that are currently in poor condition to improve overall pavement condition along streets such as Old Ranch Road, Rancho Niguel Road, and Tessier. The project will be ready for bid in July and is anticipated to start construction in January of 2024. The Aliso Creek Road and Traffic Improvements will include a slurry seal from Molten Parkway to La Paz Road, new roadway striping to improve the bike lanes and calm traffic speeds, and new video detection that will detect bicycles and improve the function of the traffic signals at Molten Parkway and La Paz Road. This project was created to improve pavement condition and address high speeds near the senior and community center and elementary school and past residential neighborhoods. The residential overlay program will provide asphalt resurfacing for failed residential streets that are damaged beyond a slurry seal repair. This annual project addresses streets that are severely cracked and require rehabilitation or grind-in overlay to return the street to a new condition. The sidewalk improvement program is intended to remove and replace sections of sidewalk that are broken, cracked, or no longer meet the requirements of ADA. This year's project is funded through CDBG and will start construction in early 2024. The Traffic Signal Equipment Upgrades Program will replace traffic signal cabinets and computerized hardware that no longer functions with the standardized technology used in modern traffic signal equipment. Many of the traffic signal cabinets and controllers are original to the city, are over 30 years of age, and contain equipment programmed with software that is outdated and unable to properly communicate with other essential components. This often leads to signal failures, signals in red flash, and blackouts. The equipment is no longer supported, and in-kind replacements are no longer available. This year's program will replace four cabinets and all of the internal equipment needed to reliably run traffic signals. It is recommended that this program be funded on an annual basis to continue replacing outdated cabinets across the city's 78 traffic signals. The Active Transportation Study and Bicycle Green Zone Project includes a citywide study of potential active transportation improvements, as well as a pilot program to upgrade and install new bike lanes standards with green conflict zone painting. Green conflict zone painting is intended to raise driver awareness of bicycles using the city's roadways and reduce conflicts between cyclists and motor vehicles approaching an intersection. The pilot program will add green-painted bicycle zones on Alicia, Aliso Creek, Heather Ridge, and La Paz around the business area near the Chat Holyfield Building. The Public Works Department was successful in obtaining a Highway Safety Improvement Project grant and a Safe Streets for All grant to pay for approximately half the project costs. The Golden Lantern Median Modifications at Serenity Lane Project will modify the landscape median along Golden Lantern to improve site distance at the intersection. This improvement was requested by residents and the Traffic and Transportation Commission in conjunction with traffic calming measures to help reduce speeds and address accidents and complaints from residents at this location. Fiscal year 2324 is budgeted for design, and construction will be proposed in the 2425 CIP budget. That concludes my presentation. City Manager Letourneau.
Thank you, Public Works Director Scott. Mayor and City Council, as you can see, we truly have a great deal to be proud of here in Laguna Niguel. As one of the safest cities in the state, we will continue to be well-protected. As one of the most stunningly beautiful cities, we will continue to be meticulously maintained. And as one of the most fiscally sound cities, we will continue to be fiscally conservative while maintaining our healthy reserve. I'd like to thank you, Mayor and City Council, for all your trust and support you've provided throughout the year. This budget is possible through a team-based approach and a collaborative effort that involves all of our employees and all of our departments at all levels of this organization. Thank you to the city's executive leadership team and to each department's budget liaisons for assisting in the development of the budget, and a special thank you to Finance Director Agrilius and Finance Manager Kristin Forrier for all of the many, many hours spent putting this detailed budget document together. So City Council staff recommends that you adopt Resolution 2023-1439 approving the city's fiscal year 2023-2024 operating and capital improvement budget, that you hold the public hearing tonight and adopt Resolution 2023-1440 amending the community development fee schedule and amending the fee for the use of the city's credit card and debit card payments for the city, making a finding of exemption under SEQA. Adopt Resolution 2023-1441 establishing the appropriation ORGAN limit for the city of Laguna Niguel for the following fiscal year. Commit the fiscal year 2023-2024 half-million-dollar budget surplus to the Deferred Maintenance Capital Asset and Infrastructure Replacement Reserve, and commit the fiscal year 2021-2022 $2.1 million surplus to the Deferred Maintenance Capital Assets and Infrastructure Reserve. And that concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much, City Manager Letourneau. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Jennings?
I have no questions tonight. All my questions were answered at our budget workshop that we had a couple weeks ago and in talking to our City Manager and our Finance Director and all of our staff members. So thank you for answering my questions over the last few weeks.
I just have comments. Is that okay?
Comments will come after. Any questions? Okay, wonderful. You guys were very thorough. Thank you very much. And we will now open the public hearing. Are there any request-to-speak forms?
There are none.
Okay, we will now close public hearing. Now we will take discussion, council discussion. Would you like to go first? Mayor Protem Otto?
Thank you so much, Mayor Jennings. So I have gone line by line in this budget. I actually had exactly 50 questions for staff on this. I enjoy, I'm studying the budget. It's one of my, actually, it's kind of crazy, but it's one of my favorite things to do. I just want to talk a little bit and highlight some of the things in the budget that I appreciated. You know, many of our increases in this budget are due to inflation and the increase in cost of goods. There are some decreases on line items that have offset some of that, but, which I appreciate. Our sheriff's contract actually came in lower, but because we're at the end of an employment agreement, we need to put in a buffer of about 8.1% to to cover us in case, you know, so we don't know where those negotiations are going to go. We're boosting our employees' salaries and benefits so that we can retain our excellent employees and we can attract great new employees. That's very important. We've had, we've got the cost of doing business, like software upgrades. We've got Mission Viejo Animal Services contract increased 14%. I'm just showing how great we balance this budget, but we had all these challenges, okay? This year's CIP, I'm really excited about the Bicycle Green Pilot Project. I hope you continue to come back to City Council and keep us on task for that. I really appreciated your comments. It's one of my priorities as well. So that new green conflict zone striping, we'll see how it works for us, and we'll go from there. I also want to congratulate staff on presenting more, you know, page 84, the one that you could barely read, that I had to blow up, which really shows future capital projects. We have two big projects that are coming up that aren't funded yet, and that is the Crown Valley Parkway Widening. That's a $15 million project, and the La Paz Rehab, and that's a $16 million project. So neither of these do we have a current funding for. We've got excellent potential funding, but this is why I'm supportive of putting that surplus into our infrastructure fund. We need to, that's very prudent, because we do have these two big, over $30 million projects coming down the pipe. And even when we do get funding, it won't, it won't be for the whole, the whole thing. We'll have to put in some of our own money. Changing our planning fees so that we can stop subsidizing developers and plan and save for the next general plan in 20 years is really smart and what a lot of other cities are doing. We should be updating our general plan every 20 years. If any of my councilmembers want to join me in writing that down somewhere, I'm making that a policy. I'd love to see that, just to make sure we keep everything on track and it doesn't go 33 years like it did this time. I especially want to thank Finance Director Agrilius for your work. You did a fabulous job, and I could see your foot, you know, your You did a fabulous job and I could see your foot, you know, your little fingerprint on this budget when I read it. And I said to Tammy, I said, I think this is Trevor. This, this interest income increase of two hundred and fifty percent is fabulous. And I just appreciate you and you're such an excellent new hire for us. And he's also reduced a lot of our bank fees. So that's just my summary of the highlights of what I liked about the budget and so I'm going to be approving the budget tonight.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Winstead?
I echo some of Mayor Protem Otto's comments. Particularly, I agree we should be putting the two point six million dollars into the deferred maintenance capital assets and infrastructure reserves. I think that's a great place to put it. Also, I did want to say that looking at the five-year financial forecast, the conservative revenue estimates compared with inflation and increasing expenses has us at a near breakeven point, which is concerning. But it just highlights the need for the city to remain conservative in our budgeting and to, to maintain, maintain the city's financial sustainability. So thank you for the efforts that you're doing, keeping us, letting us have reserves and keep it up so that we can see that in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Jeneway?
According to the Congressional Budget Office, the federal government is running a deficit of about one and a half trillion dollars this year. The state of California is projected to run a deficit of thirty-one billion dollars this year. That is unacceptable. The people deserve a government that operates within its means. And we are proud to deliver to the residents of Laguna Niguel a balanced budget. One where revenues exceed expenditures, one where our police are fully funded, where our one hundred and forty-one miles of road and seventy-six intersections are well-maintained. Our parks and sports facilities are safe, clean and fun. And we continue to provide the residents the year-round events that bring our community together. The Sea Country Festival, the Concerts in the Park, the Holiday Parade, the Fourth of July festivities, the fireworks, which we will have in just a couple of weeks. There's a lot of great things in this budget. And while we are voting on it tonight, this is really a year-round process to get to this point. We've spent a lot of time discussing with staff our priorities. A budget is a statement of priorities. And this budget reflects our priorities of safety first and having safe streets and clean parks and wonderful events while also meeting our long-term goals. We had a strategic planning workshop for the strategic plan in March where we laid out many of our priorities and these priorities are adopted in this budget. We had a budget workshop a couple of weeks ago where we went over some of the finer points of this budget and those were adopted in this budget. And as I've stated, we've had many meetings with staff to get to this point. A couple of unique items that I'd like to point out that you won't see in a budget every year, but we're doing it. We've been doing it last year and we're going to continue doing it over the next two years is our general plan update. In the last meeting, we approved the contract for a firm to help us update that plan, which as Mayor Protem Otto stated, it's been thirty years since it's been updated. It hasn't been updated since the inception of our city. And so that's a big undertaking and we're getting that underway. Another big thing we're doing that has not been done since the inception of our city is an update to our entire municipal code. Laws change. Supreme Court of United States comes out with new law. The Supreme Court of California comes out with new law. Our legislature is writing new laws at breakneck speed. I know in my day job that they are changing the laws very rapidly. And we need our municipal code to be up to date so that it withstands any kind of judicial review or challenge. And so this budget accounts for that. We are going to update our entire municipal code with this budget. And that will be about a two-year process. So ultimately, we're balancing long-term goals with immediate needs. Looking at the surplus and what to do with it, we have about two point six million dollar surplus. Let me say that again, two point six million dollar surplus. Rarely do you ever hear that when talking about government budgeting and that's how we do things in Laguna Niguel. We're very conservative with our budgeting, so to the point where we actually have a surplus at the end. So balancing long-term goals with immediate needs, I am satisfied in putting this surplus towards our infrastructure. It is no secret to anybody driving around town that when you drive on La Paz, we've got an issue. We've got some earth movement over on La Paz to the point where half the road is shut down. We need to be able to have the funding and the liquidity to tackle that problem. Now, we are going forward and seeking a sixteen million dollar grant from the federal government to tackle that problem. But it is going to require us to put some cash forward, cash upfront, to make sure that we can remediate and rehabilitate that area. And then we get reimbursed on the back end after we get that grant. So we do need the flexibility in our budget to make sure we do that correctly and we do that as soon as possible. And I offer that to the public in asking for your patience in that area of town. That's not a quick fix. That area of La Paz has been a problem going back to nineteen ninety-seven, maybe even before that. It's not a quick fix. It's going to take a couple of years. So please be patient with that area, but we, we are focused on projects like that, on the Crown Valley Widening Project, everything that Mayor Protem Otto mentioned on page eighty-four. We have a lot of, that's kind of the roadmap for the next five years with capital improvement. So if you want to see what we're looking at doing over the next five years, turn to page eighty-four in the budget. But ultimately, this is a solid budget. It is a balanced budget. And I'm very proud that we're going to pass this tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Jones?
Thank you. I have the easy part. I didn't have to work on this budget. It is solid. I'm behind it a hundred percent. I've lived in cities where we don't have a surplus, that we're borrowing money. It's wonderful to come here and know that the foundation of this city started with a balanced budget and we're still continuing that. So again, I'm a hundred percent behind this, everything you guys have said. I'm a hundred percent in support and I thank you all for your hard work on this.
I would like to take a moment to express my sincere appreciation to the diligent and hardworking city staff who has played a pivotal role in crafting and presenting a balanced budget. Our dedicated city manager and finance team, thank you for your meticulous analysis, financial expertise and tireless efforts in ensuring that our city's finances are managed responsibly. Your commitment to fiscal discipline, attention to detail and careful consideration of revenue sources and expenditure priorities have been instrumental in achieving a balanced budget. We also extend our gratitude to our administration, community development, IT, public safety, public works and Parks and Rec Departments for providing valuable input and insights. Your contributions have been invaluable in shaping this budget and aligning with our strategic plan and the needs of our community. The task of balancing a budget is not an easy one as it requires making difficult decisions, prioritizing competing, competing demands and seeking creative solutions to address the challenges we face. We commend the staff for their dedication, professionalism and their countless hours invested in this process. Your collective efforts have resulted in a budget that reflects our commitment to responsible financial stewardship as well as the well-being of our residents. This budget provides a solid foundation for the sound financial management, enabling the city to meet its obligations, maintaining public services, investing in infrastructure and the support of the well-being of our residents, all with zero debt. This reflects our commitment to the fiscal responsibility, transparency and accountability. Together, we will continue to navigate the complexities and opportunities that lie ahead, striving to deliver the highest level of service to our residents and making our city an even better place to live, work and play. So thank you everyone for all of your hard work and to my colleagues for all of your questions and diving deep into this. This is an important document for our city, so I truly appreciate it. So now we will, I have a lot to read, so bear with me, pardon me. As required, per Government Code Section five four nine five three C three, the mayor or other presiding officers shall orally report a summary of the recommendation for final action on the salary schedule paid in the form of fringe benefits of a local agency executive during the open regular meeting in which the final action is to be taken and prior to the motion to approve. As a deputy community development director classification is a new classification which falls under this category, I will state for the record that the salary scale for this executive level position is set at twelve thousand four hundred nine dollars per month, up to fifteen thousand five hundred and twelve dollars per month. Thank you. Do we need to make, take a motion for that or can I include everything else in that motion?
It could be included as part of the overall package, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Also, adopt Resolution two zero two three dash one four three nine approving the city of Laguna Niguel fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four operating and capital improvement budget. Adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash one four zero amending the community development fee schedule and amending the fee for use of city credit card, debit card and payment to the city and making a finding of exemption under SEQA in connection therewith. Adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one four four one establishing the appropriation limit, GAN limit for the city of Laguna Niguel for the next fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Commit the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty four, twenty four point five million dollar budget surplus to deferred maintenance, capital assets and infrastructure replacement reserve and commit the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two two point one million dollar surplus to the deferred maintenance capital asset and infrastructure replacement reserve. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
A second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Yay, good job everyone. This concludes our public hearing item. We will now move on to City Council, City Manager and Department reports. And City Council reports. Councilmember Winstead?
I've got something fun that I wanted to share with people. I don't know whether or not you're aware, but the city actually has an app. You download it, you put it on your phone and it's, I might be stealing some of Director Rivera's thunder here, but the really cool thing about this is the calendar. You tap on it and it tells you what's going on in the city. And hey, there's a city council meeting tonight. But did you know that there's Go Skate Day tomorrow over at the park from four PM to six PM? And there's Blooming Senior's Gardening on Thursday and Sea Country Cinema on Friday and a summer concert, Yachty by Nature. So this is a lot of fun. There's also, if you tap up here, there's a restaurant locator. So a little map pops up and generates and you go, oh, I'm craving Italian food or I'd like sushi. And you can type it in and this little map shows you where there's restaurants. So I just remember talking to people and them saying, oh, I didn't know that that existed or I didn't know that this was going on. Well, you know what? Download the app and then take a look at the calendar. It's really convenient and now you don't have an excuse. You know what's going on. So check it out. There's some really exciting things happening in the city. So, thank you.
Mayor Protem Otto?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Well, it is budget season in municipal government and as your representative on the TCA, on the toll roads, we passed the budget. I want to talk a little bit about, and I circulated an information flyer for all my colleagues so they can kind of see what's going on in TCA with our, paying down our bonds. And I talked about this a little bit before and I just want to talk about it a little bit more and I apologize because I do have a few comments tonight, so everybody gets settled in. So this is the first of my comments and that is, you know, in, when I first came on to the TCA, there was a suggestion of this open bond buyback program, which I approved and it was wildly successful. We saved a hundred and fifty million in interest and we paid down a hundred and fifty million in bonds. And it was incredible. And so the history of the agency over the last, I don't know, five or ten years has been, you know, I should say, I think five years, a seven hundred million dollar savings, a hundred and eighty million dollar and this most recent one fifty million, which is a total of one billion dollar savings. The seven hundred million was a bond refunding, so that was replacing higher interest rate bonds with lower interest rate bonds. Then the one twenty-five bond principal payback saved, saved a hundred and eighty million in interest. And then I just spoke about the third one that we did in January. The future of the agency coming between the next couple of years and twenty thirty is to pay down nine hundred and eighty million in bonds, saving over eight hundred and sixty million in interest. So we have to wait until the bonds are callable and then we can pay them down and that's why we can't just go do that right now. We're very comfortable with capital reserves. That's part of our, our bond indentures. But we also have it for capital improvement. So anytime the toll roads do a capital improvement, it's all cash. So that's kind of an update on TCA. I want to talk a little bit about an issue that I've talked about here up here, up here before. And that is property insurance and wildfires. You know, when I first, when I was running for city council, we had, you know, this devastating coastal fire that affected our neighborhoods. And, you know, when you're running for office, you're trying to fix problems, right? So it's like, well, how is this going to affect our community? And one of those ways that it affects our community is that when you have a wild, when you have a fire, you're going to start to see property insurance rates go up. Now, I have already lived through this, having served in public office in Florida with hurricanes. So I was well aware of this. And so when I came to office, I started talking about and advocating for, you know, what's going to happen to the California, you know, property insurance market. And it's been really interesting since, you know, it's kind of raising alarm bells. We've had two insurers who have, you know, paused writing property insurance in the state of California, Allstate and State Farm. They've cited multiple reasons, inflation, building costs and, you know, the insurance, the property insurance market. So, you know, I just I'm going to continue to advocate on behalf of our residents because I think this plays into housing affordability. We all pay a lot of money to live in California and housing affordability is on everyone's mind. And when your property insurance and you're living in a condo goes up by hundreds of dollars a month because it's being passed through on your assessment, that is unsustainable. And it's something that I think local electeds should be aware of and should be advocating on behalf of their residents for. So I was really not happy to see something recently in the OC Register. You know, one of the things that Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lara has done is to offer, to tell the insurance companies that, hey, if you, you need to offer discounts to folks who choose to fire harden their home. So you put in a better roof, it's going to protect you from fire. You do certain things to your home that's going to protect you from fire. We're going to offer, we want you to offer your customers discounts. And this is something I'm very familiar with because I've received them in Florida. You know, the OC Register writes this editorial from the editorial board, which the facts are completely wrong. But it says, and it quotes, "In this case, the California Department of Insurance released a statement that read in part, 'We have been here before after major wildfires. What's different now is our actions in California with the first ever insurance discount program for wildfire safety.'" This is what the California Department of Insurance said. What, what they meant by that quote is it's the first time California's ever done it. The editorial says, and they mock this California Department of Insurance statement by saying, sometimes when you're the first ever, you find out why, why no one else has done it. And so they're blaming the fact that these insurance discounts are the reason why Allstate and State Farm have pulled out of the market, which it's actually not the first ever. Sometimes when you're the first ever, you find out why no one else has done it. One could, you know, and I sympathize with editorial boards and local papers and they don't have a lot of money to research, but a quick Google search of the state of Florida offers discounts. I was a recipient of discounts. So it has been done before. I, I think it's disheartening that we have a paper that doesn't side with California homeowners and chooses to side with the insurance companies. And I think that we should advocate on behalf of our residents to help them with, with this problem and with the, the insurance problem affecting affordability. So you're either going to use a carrot or stick in government. How are you going to fire harden homes in California? How are you going to get people to protect their property and their lives? And you can do it by offering insurance discounts on property. And so that's my two cents on that. That's my little soapbox about that issue. I want to talk a little bit about Juneteenth. This is a holiday that we recognize. It's a new federal holiday. It was on Monday and so I want to- It was on Monday, and so I want to just say a few comments on that, and Juneteenth is the commemoration of the end of slavery of African-Americans in the United States. It's celebrated, it's remembering June 19th, 1865. We continue to recognize this day as a celebration, but also as a reminder that we still have work to do with racism and bigotry. Now, City Hall was open Monday, and a lot of that is because, you know, we sign our labor agreements years out ahead, and so we've got all our holidays already in our contracts. And so, that's why we were open. We have a new contract going forward, and everyone's very happy with that agreement, so we don't, we don't want to change that. But, I do think it would be prudent to close City Hall on Juneteenth and to recognize this holiday. I think it's an important holiday, and I'd like to ask our city attorney if it's possible, can we do a side letter with OCEA that won't interrupt our labor negotiation that we've so neatly laid out?
That could be considered in your meet-and-confer process.
It could be considered what?
In your meet-and-confer process, if the council's so directed.
Okay.
But, yeah, you'd want to talk about that as part of that process, I think.
That process is complete.
It'd have to be a re-opener.
It would have to be a re-opener? With a side letter?
Meet-and-confer.
Okay. Thank you. That's why I asked you. Well, if some way we can find a way to celebrate this holiday, we'll work on that with staff. But I wanted to at least recognize it tonight. So, lastly, I would like to welcome Jean Johns, Councilmember Jean Johns, to the dais. I'm super happy to see five people up here, and all the diverse things that everyone brings to the council. I know we're all going to be complimentary of each other, and Councilmember Jenneway and Mayor Jennings and I have been up here kind of doing this thing. And so, it's funny, I kind of got used to it, and now, like, as we've had Councilmember Winstead on, her knowledge of what she knows of small business, and Councilmember Johns of public safety, I just think it's a well-rounded council. And so, I want to congratulate you. I feel great about this council. I feel positive about our direction, and I know that we're a better council than when I was first elected, and that's why I feel so great about it. So, thanks, everybody. Those are my comments. Sorry they were so long tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Johns?
Yeah, I'll keep this simple and short, it's my first one. Again, I want to thank you all for your support of me, and I hope to trust, and I'll show you over the next 17 months, that you've made a good choice. I did my first official function this weekend, Saturday, meeting the goats. So, I got to go out and pet the goats, and that was a fun day, meeting with the people and the children, they were amazing. And the final thing I'll say, keeping it on a lighter side, today is National Vanilla Milkshake Day. So, everybody, if you haven't done it, go out and get yourself a vanilla milkshake. Thank you.
Councilmember Jenneway.
Thank you very much. And first, I want to thank the 20 residents who applied for the council vacancy, who took time out of their evening last Wednesday to meet with us, to share their vision for our city. We met some incredible people. We are truly blessed with a talented community, with a culture of volunteerism, and it was quite a long meeting, but I'm glad we did it that way. I'm glad we spent the time interviewing everybody. And congratulations to Councilmember Jean Johns, congratulations to your wife, Michelle, as well. Jean is a lifetime public servant, 31 years as a sheriff deputy in Los Angeles, and for 24 of those years, he was cross-designated with the Drug Enforcement Administration, running one of the most successful task forces in the entire nation, dismantling and disrupting international drug cartels, so much that he has received many awards for his work, and he is nationally recognized in that field of work. He spent a career making communities safer and healthier, and I know that's what he's going to do in his new role as our city council member. And I agree with Mayor Protem Otto, we are a strong council now. We are a solid council. And for a while there, it was just the three of us, doing the work of five, but we are, I'm really pleased with this group of five. So, thank you both to Councilmember Winstead and Councilmember Johns for stepping forward. When I attend neighborhood watch meetings throughout the city, a common topic of conversation is the rise in residential burglaries. Now, this has been written about by many news sources across our county. It's not just happening in Laguna Niguel, it's happening all across our county. And last Friday, I was privileged to attend a press conference hosted by our district attorney, Todd Spitzer, where the Speaker of the House, Kevin McCarthy, and other members of Congress from Orange County joined together in calling on the State Department to take action on what has become a problem in enabling many of these burglary crews to come to our area and commit these crimes. There's currently a visa waiver program where individuals are abusing this visa waiver program by coming through the nation of Chile into our country. This program allows easy access into the United States, and these individuals are coming to our country for the purpose of working together to commit burglaries. Chile is not sharing their criminal database with our authorities. We are not able to vet those individuals who are using our visa waiver program to come into our country. And so, the district attorney, the Speaker of the House, many members of Congress, on a bipartisan level, are calling on the State Department and the White House to temporarily suspend this visa waiver program that we have with Chile. And if they won't do it, then the Speaker of the House has vowed that he will use the budget process to defund that portion of the visa waiver program. I think this is a common-sense solution to help our communities rid this rising problem of residential burglaries throughout our county and throughout the region, and I'm supportive of that. And I just wanted to let the residents know that this is a topic that is on the front of the minds of many of our elected officials in the region, because this is, this is quite frankly, a dangerous scenario in which groups of individuals are committing these burglaries. And so, when I go across the city to these neighborhood watch meetings, that seems to be a common topic of conversation, and we are taking action on that, or rather, the federal government is taking action on that. And that leads me to my final point, in that on June 27th, Laguna Niguel Police Services is having a neighborhood watch meeting for anybody in town who wants to attend. It will be at the Crown Valley Community Center at 6:00 p.m. on the 27th, and you can find more information on our website. So, thanks you so much, and I hope to see you all at the Friday summer concert, where we will hear from a band, it's kind of, it's kind of weird to say on the microphone, Yachty by Nature. All right, we'll hope to see you there. Thanks so much.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. I will not belabor everything, but I do want to welcome Councilmember Johns. We are grateful for your service and all that you have given to our city, and I know that you were ready today for our budget, approving the budget, because you were, you have attended the meeting. So, thank you for your, for wanting to serve our city, and I know that you'll do a good job, and we have an excellent team up here, and we are so excited at what the future holds. So, thank you very much.
City manager, Laterno.
Yes, we have an exciting department report from Parks and Recreation Director Rivera about the wonderful July 4th activities coming up, so.
Thank you, City Manager Laterno. Thank you, City Council. The City of Laguna Niguel has a long history of hosting wonderful 4th of July events. This year will once again continue that tradition. Our 4th of July celebration begins with a 5K run hosted by the YMCA at 8:00 a.m. The run also includes a very popular expo featuring the best of Laguna Niguel. Don't forget to try the delicious pancake breakfast that returns, once again, hosted by Laguna Niguel Chamber of Commerce. Pancakes will be served from 7:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. There will also be free lap swim at Laguna Niguel Aquatic Center from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., followed by a free pool party featuring inflatable water apparatus and music from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. And be sure to look at the sky at 5:30 p.m. for our patriotic flyover over Laguna Niguel. The concert featuring Joey Rydel's Rockin' Man, Elton John Experience, will begin at 6:00 p.m., and music will play till 8:00 p.m. Throughout the day, the City of Laguna Niguel Parks and Recreation Department will be passing out beach balls, light glow sticks, as well as American flags to wave those red, white, and blue colors all over Laguna Niguel. And of course, at 9:00 p.m., the sky over Laguna Niguel will light up with the return of our patriotic firework spectacular, once again celebrating the USA and life Laguna Niguel. We want to wish you a happy 4th of July, and look forward to seeing you at all those events. Thank you.
That concludes our reports this evening. Thank you so much. We are now adjourned at 8:13 p.m. Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.